We have a quorum, so we will entertain, I will entertain a motion to reconvene the city council meeting from December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. I want to welcome you all here tonight for the final set of presentations for the American Rescue Plan funds being allocated by the City of Urbana. By way of introduction, I just wanted to say the City of Urbana has approximately ten million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds to allocate for qualified projects. According to federal treasury guidelines, the funds must be committed by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. The city contracted with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission to help administer the funds, solicit public input, and work with the city council and staff to develop a concept plan to identify funding priorities and to guide decisions. The application process was opened in mid-September. It closed on November sixteenth. The city received applications from community organizations and city departments requesting ARPA funds to address the goals of the concept plan. The eligible, eligible applications have been reviewed and scored according to a metric. The external applications were scored by city staff. Internal applications were scored by RPC staff. All eligible applicants have been invited to make brief presentations over, over this meetings this week. All presentations are twelve minutes long. They follow the same format. The, up to the first six minutes of the presentation will focus on responding to three questions provided by the city and any other information applicants wish to provide. The second six minutes will be open to Q and A from city council members and the mayor. Applicants have also been asked to submit a one-page executive summary to convey key information about the proposed project. Council members have access to complete applications and project budgets. I just wanted to let folks know that no funding decisions or actions on any of these applications will be made until after the first of the year. Today, we are finishing up gathering information and hearing from the applicants. I wanted to say, give a special thanks to city staff member Will Kolchowski and to RPC staff members JD McClanahan and until recently Ashley McLaughlin for guiding us over the past year to get us to this point. I think this process has been consistent, logical, and fair, and I hope you found that as well. I want to thank all of you for caring so much about your community. Just a couple of housekeeping items. The restrooms are located in the lobby just behind you, and we'll take a ten-minute break between numbers six and seven, so that'll be, after the Ambucks presentation, we'll take a ten-minute break, and we have a total of twelve presentations for tonight. I'll turn this over to Will in case he wants to add anything else.
Your roll call.
And we'll do a roll call, which I seem to forget every night. So, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu, Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti. Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. I will say that Will will give people a thirty-second notice by holding up a yellow card, and we will be very consistent about having people end their presentations at that time and moving on to questions, and make sure that you speak into the microphone and say your name slowly and very clearly so the clerks can record that for the meeting minutes. So, we will move on to the first presentation for tonight, which is First Followers, the Urbana Community Peace Hub.
Good evening. I'm James Gilgore. I'm the Director of Outreach and Advocacy.
Turn on your mic.
First Followers reentry program. In two thousand and twenty-one, when news of the ARPA funds came out, First Followers joined in sending an email to the mayor of Urbana, the mayor of Champaign, and the chair of the county board, and we urged them to allocate at least ten percent of those funds to addressing the issue of community violence. We are inspired that Champaign County and city have done this, and we hope that Urbana will do the same, and we offer our proposal for an Urbana Community Peace Hub in that vein. Since the day we opened our doors in two thousand and fifteen, First Followers has been fighting against community violence by providing support to people coming home from prison. This work channels people who may be likely to engage in violence toward becoming useful assets to the community. In two thousand and seventeen, we added to this effort by starting the GOMAD Workforce Development Program, targeting eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds who have been impacted by violence in the criminal legal system. As an organization led by people who have been impacted by violence and incarceration ourselves, building peace has been a driving motivation of First Followers. Emerging adults, especially from the black community, have been disproportionately impacted by COVID. This is intimately connected to the violence we have seen spreading across our community. We need to allocate funds to directly support the social, emotional, and economic needs of this constituency with interventions like the Community Peace Hub, which we are offering, which includes both reentry and outreach. Will this have a lasting impact? Of course it will. We have already seen the lasting impact of this type of work. People who have come through our program have become successful in many ventures. One of our former peer mentors is currently studying for a PhD at UIC. Two others have completed master's degrees. Our GOMAD participants have developed a set of construction skills which has enabled them to renovate five houses for low-income households. Two of these construction projects have been in partnership with the City of Urbana. Two of our peer mentors have also formed their own nonprofit organizations working in the social justice sector. Our work has had a lasting impact on the lives of people participating in the construction work, in our other project work, and on the residents who benefit from affordable housing. Our present project brings the success of our reentry work in Champaign to an Urbana venue, our Community Peace Hub. We are making this move because despite our success, we recognize two gaps in our work. We have not addressed issues of violence in Urbana specifically, and we have not devoted sufficient resources to providing support for the reentry of women coming home from prison and jail and those women impacted by incarceration and violence. Our project would be the best use of ARPA funds because it devotes resources directly to impacted individuals, both in terms of the actors implementing this program and those who benefit from it. As we never tire of repeating, those who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. In this community, that is us. Can we sustain this work beyond ARPA? Absolutely. In our seven years of operation, we have built relationships with over, with local, statewide, and national funders. We have successfully reported to them, and we have raised over a hundred thousand through our own local independent fundraising. These relationships have developed because the reputation of our work has spread across our county and the state of Illinois. We have people who love us and will support us financially when we run a program. We are confident that this program will be successful, and with the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars that we are requesting in year one, we are confident that we will once again achieve a success with this program. I will now hand over to Ms. Valerie Nesbit Howard to introduce our latest set of activities.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Nesbit Howard, and I am one of the co-founders of Hope for Women, and I would like to enlighten you on what we do and what our potential goals look like. The mission of Hope for Women is helping women successfully reenter the workforce, connect with families, and community. Hope for Women works to facilitate the empowerment of the formerly incarcerated and their families to create a successful future built on strategic leadership and character development by assisting those fighting for second chances. We strive to serve, build, and strengthen our community. We are Hope for Women, and we are participating and partnering with First Followers in addition to collaborating with First Followers to build this community peace hub. We are a reentry program for women that helps to provide resources here in the community. All of our teams have been impacted on one level or another by the justice system. What Hope for Women will do is assist with helping women find housing, education, gainful employment, counseling, mentorship, and we will also assist women with getting acclimated back into the community in addition to other resources needed and based on the need of the individuals. With that being said, I know that my time is coming to an end, and if you have further questions, James and I will be more than glad to answer any that you may have.
Perfectly timed. Thank you. We'll move on to council member questions. Chris?
Thank you for your presentation. So it looks to me, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about a real estate transaction, right? I mean, our securing a place. You have a very specific number, so that is my question. Do you have, have you identified a property in Urbana yet?
We have not identified a property. We would be renting a place. We're not talking about purchasing a place just yet, anyway.
So what I want to understand is that, so this is for the Peace Hub for the Hope for Women to operate out of? Or is it First Followers and within that hub, there will be offices for Hope for Women? I want to understand that.
So there are two components to the, to the, to the Peace Hub. The Hope for Women is one component, and then the other component is an outreach component, which First Followers would use to build on our work in, particularly in apartment complexes in Urbana, which have been impacted by violence and where we've built some connections with people, and we want to develop that further by building those relationships, holding events, and, and also providing other services that can help strengthen those, those communities. Places like Aspen Court, Town and Country Village, and so forth.
Now, did you want to add anything?
No, he pretty much summed it up. So we will be collaborating with them, and we'll be doing pretty much the same work, except ours is intentional for women.
Okay.
Can you tell me what you found to be most effective in Champaign so far?
Most effective in terms of?
Reducing violence or achieving your goals?
Well, I think the most important thing is to, is to be able to develop relationships with people who are impacted by violence. So we have done, but we, but we need to have programs, and we need to have people who are also have some experience of being impacted by violence and incarceration, whose experiences can connect to the constituency that we're trying to organize. So, for example, in, in the construction projects that I spoke of, it's not, we don't, we're not just teaching people about construction. We're also doing general education and building people's motivation to do something other than some of the things they've been involved in in the past, and that's why we find, we find some of our GOMAD participants, for example, are now doing HVAC certificates at the, at Parkland. Three of them are graduating from high school that they've, that they've gone through a high school education program with the supervision of First Followers. So, but it's really about building relationships with, with that population, and that's, I mean, that's what we've always felt, and it's, it's a very different approach than, say, a policing approach, trying to get rid of a, a problem of violence by, by locking people up.
Thank you.
For the Hope for Women, how, how many women have you already served and helped?
So we've served two women. We've had the pleasure of helping two women. We're newly an organization, and we just started in September, but since September, we've had two females that we've assisted, and it's been pretty prominent. Both of them have, one has gotten her GED, and then the other one has gotten back into the workforce and again, coming from federal prison and state prison. We built the alliance and the relationship and got them motivated, and so I've had two successes thus far.
Okay, thank you.
Could you explain the specific need and challenges of people reentering the community from incarceration as opposed to other populations in general?
Well, I think, I think it's important to recognize incarceration is a traumatic experience. So there's a specific set of traumas that, that people face. Some of them are, I mean, it also depends on how long someone is incarcerated for, but for example, people who have extended periods of incarceration, I mean, they're not familiar even with, with basic technology. It's also a question of trying to get people reconnected to their families, redeveloping those social skills. The person that leaves the community to go to prison isn't the same person that comes back from that prison into the community, and the families that they come back to or the community that they come back to are also not what they were when they left. So there's a whole set of social adjustments, and unless you have some familiarity with this, it just seems kind of bizarre that you have a forty-year-old man that can't make a, a phone call on a cell phone. But there's a reason for that, and we, and we've, we've developed a sensitivity to that from our own experience and from dealing with people that have, that have come to us through our program. We've had over five hundred visitors in, in seven years in, in, in our drop-in center in Champaign.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Thank you for the numbers on, on your startup. I wondered if you could talk a little bit about, for this year-long program, how many individuals and how many, maybe specifically, how many women you would expect to be able to work with and impact over a year's period of time?
I think for, I think for the Hope for Women, we're probably looking at something on, on the order of ten to fifteen women. But, I mean, one of the things that's important for us is that it's about building relationships, and so we're not, we don't just do referrals. We don't just tell people, there's a job over there, but we spend time with them and build that relationship. In terms of the outreach, it'll, it'll, it'll be between fifty and a hundred people.
Well, your time is up now, but I forgot to mention that if council members have additional questions or need more information from any of the applicants, they'll be sending questions to Will, and then we'll be reaching out to you so you can answer them. So you'll probably hear from us more. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next presenter is Angels Youth Center for Angels Youth Center Program. You may begin, anytime.
Hello, my name is Karen Johnson. I am the Secretary of Angels Youth Center.
Hello, my name is Angelica. I am the Executive Director of AYC.
My name is Lynette, and I am an executive fund developer for Angels Youth.
Angels Youth Center is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. This foundation is set to empower, build confidence, self-esteem, and help young people reach their potential by providing a comprehensive youth development services in a diverse and caring environment. We support community violence interventions by providing the young individuals the opportunities to achieve greatness through mentoring, tutoring courses such as art projects, music composition, and cooking classes. We also provide a licensed daycare for low-income families. We have been in business for ten years with thirty years of experience with social and emotional child development, speech, language, and fine motor skills. Lasting impact. Angels Youth Center will create a feasible fee structure, enroll in CCRS to receive payments, and develop a fundraising plan. Angels Youth Center will continue to request donations from organizations and individuals in this community as well as apply for additional grants, funding opportunities, and partnerships. AYC has partnered with the United Way Grow Incubator Program and will apply for the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois yearly grant that releases in August, and has further plans to partner with Unit 116 and Unit 4 District School. AYC has plans for several community events, and All-White Family Healing Party, which will bring in funding from AYC, will continue to partner with tons, with those in the community for coat drives, back-to-school supplies, turkey drives, and Christmas toy drives. We will assist parents with getting their children readmitted to school after being suspended or expelled from school. While parents' jobs may be on the line, we set up meetings with principals and parents. During the COVID-nineteen, we assisted parents with how to help their children with their homework. Angels Youth Center bridged the gap and brought families back together. They also held the Beat the Streets Team Summit in two thousand and twenty-one that was held at Douglas Park. They partnered with the Ministerial Alliance where they had a member of the ACLU, Ruth Wyman, present. She was there to present with questions and answers. They also had the president of the NAACP Champaign County Branch present during that time. The best use of the city ARPA funds, Angels Youth Center, is unique in every way. There are no organizations in Champaign or Urbana offering support to ages six weeks to eighteen years of age and their families. We build early relationships with our participants, and our services are available throughout their growth and development, assisting these children from the start to the finish, allowing them to establish a solid foundation. Our staff serves as a guiding hand for our youth, providing positive attention to foster their academic and emotional growth, which, obtaining the funding, it will allow AYC to acquire two vans to provide services for additional youth and families. They will also create jobs. It will also provide stipends for the University of Illinois students who will assist AYC with tutoring services. AYC has partnered with Precious Care Daycare Center, Karen's Way, Prosperity Financial Group Incorporated. This will increase the center to offer availability Monday through Friday. It will provide supplies necessary to increase literacy and the confidence in children. It will provide a safe, dry, loving environment to gain self-confidence, increase socioeconomic, emotional skills, allowing students and surroundings to express the impact of gun violence that it has had on them. The funds will be used to make sure that all documentation and all ledgers are needed. We will make sure that everything is allocated, stated as the budget will reflect, and we will also target our students and provide all surveys and progress reports to show achievements. We wanted to play a video. We did with WCIA, but we didn't know it would work, and that's fine. And whatever questions you have, we are so excited to answer them today.
We'll move on to council questions. Sharice?
I guess my main question is, is this program, is this programming new, or is this something that's continuing? Is it something that you're trying to build up?
This program is an, is already developed, so it will be an extension. It would be an expansion. It's already, they, AYC, AYC is already located on Dennison, and it already has students already. We've already partnered with the University of Illinois. We already have students come in, so it would just allow us to service more people.
So just to follow up on that, how many more youth will be served? You're asking for about two million dollars. So how many more youth will be served over the time period you're applying for? And what ages?
So the ages are six weeks to eighteen, and the timeframe is, the number of children is a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
Up from twenty-five.
Yeah.
You mentioned bus drivers. Are there other staff positions that would be created with this? And how would they be sustained beyond the, this particular funding?
So yes, there are, this will create more jobs, and as we mentioned, we would do the fundraisers. There's a, the, the all-white party. We would have those events. We would also do other fundraisers to raise money. And then there is also the CCRS from the daycare, so those funds would be, would cause us to make money also.
You mentioned the stipends for U of I tutors. How many tutors do you have now? And how many tutors do you expect to grow, and what would that stipend be for them?
We have about, I want to say about seven to eight tutors right now, and that would create us to be able to have more tutors and more mentors, because that's exactly what we're going to need when we expand. Because what we're doing right now, it just wouldn't be enough to go around. And we've been doing this for years, and we just want to give back in so many different ways, and we've been blessed to partner with the U of I students, and they come out and do it, but I'm sure by us getting these fundings, it would be a lot of help for them and for us so that we can expand and get more and more tutors to come. So we're looking, hopefully, we've had to turn down tutors just because we have the students, which is like around twenty-five, but we don't have enough. You see what I'm saying? And so like, if we keep getting tutors, it's not really enough for them to do. So we don't want anyone just sitting there wasting time, and so we're like, okay, if we expand, we know that we have these tutors, we have these mentors that's screaming to help, but we just need more resources.
I don't like to ask this question, but if we're not able to do the full two million proposed, is there some other amount that would still be, make this program feasible or a smaller version of it somehow?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we've been doing this just from our own funding, from fundraisers, from donations, from the community, which has been great. So absolutely, I mean, anything that you guys would be able to give, the ARPA funding would just be a blessing. And, and on top of that, we're not just going to do this grant. We're going to keep applying for different grants. We're going to keep fundraising. We're going to keep reaching out. We're going to keep working as hard as we've been doing. This is just, you know, a blessing to have the ARPA funds and have this program to be available, but we're going to keep working as hard as we can, like we've been doing since two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Of the twenty-five students you're serving now, what percentage are from the City of Urbana? And if you expand a hundred, how many, what percentage would you expect to be Urbana children?
I think it's about half. Yeah, probably half and half, but if we can expand, it would probably, our goal is to get Champaign, Urbana, Savoy.
I'm, I'm asking specifically about the City of Urbana.
Oh, the City of Urbana?
Yeah.
I would say fifty. Half.
Okay, half. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would say half and half.
So you're gonna go from twenty-five to a hundred and maybe a hundred and fifty students. My question is, do you have the architecture to handle that increase to a hundred and fifty?
So right now, that answer is no. So we would have to acquire a larger space because the space now handles fifty.
Okay.
So we would have to rent a larger space.
I guess my question is, could you give me an idea what the curriculum is that you use for your children right now?
So what we, it's not like a set, so we help them with their homework. We have laptops that are available, and so we assist with the reading, the tutoring. When the tutors come in, we have, we just have social workers come in, so we kind of like talk to them about what's going on. But the curriculum is to assist them with their homework, help them with their literacy, their reading, their writing, and just to make sure that they are able to deal with their studies at school. Absolutely.
Math skills?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
So you mentioned collaboration with the school district. Can you give some details on how you're collaborating now or how you expect to with the expanded program?
We expect to reach out and go, we already been doing that anyway.
I'll send that question in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Bradley Learning Center for Bradley Expansion. Next up is the Bradley Learning Center for Bradley Expansion.
Good evening. I am Jasmine Catchings from Bradley Learning Center. I am a director.
I'm Holly York. I'm also a director at Bradley Learning Center.
Bradley Learning Center has operated in the city of Urbana for over fifty years. We have resided at thirteen eleven East Florida Avenue for the last twenty-two years. Within our time span, we have served over ten thousand families within, within this community. Our legacy will always be to help families of the low-income population in Urbana, addressing the at-risk families. Working side by side with the unit, one-sixteenth School District and meeting the needs of our parents. We have successfully helped produce children that are productive citizens within our community. Due to the needs of our community, Bradley is working to expand and upgrade our program to a level that will not only meet the needs of our children from six weeks old to twelve years old, but to expand in order to meet the needs of our thirteen to seven-year-old population. We are seeking funding to help, to help us remodel our new facility at seventeen seventeen South Philo Road. This space will allow us to increase our program for our current age group of six weeks to twelve-year-olds by approximately increasing our enrollment by twenty-five. This new space will also allow us to create programming space for children between thirteen and seventeen years of age who have nowhere to go after school or in the summer by thirty to forty students. So our overall enrollment will increase by approximately fifty to sixty kids. In order for us to transform, this space is a learning enrichment center. We need financial assistance in creating the space that will be acceptable for a DCFS-approved learning center for children.
So the new space that we are acquiring is, um, used to be the ASPCA, so it was a call center. So there's a little bit of adjustments that have to be made. Um, and we've already started that, as you can see, um, in the slides, tearing down some of the walls to make classrooms. Um, this space is twenty-two thousand square feet where our current space is eight thousand square feet. This space also is taking over, um, no, you're good. This space that's showing right now is gonna be the space that we wanna use for the teen space. So those are cubicle areas where we could probably fit about ten students in each cubicle. Each cubicle would be a different section. We would have an art section. Um, there's classrooms, the ones with the wooden doors on the far end. There's three of those plus a bigger space that we're gonna use as a computer lab. Those classrooms will also be used as different things. Um, there will be like a room where each child, um, sorry, each age group will be able to break into groups. Um, thirteen to seventeen-year-old, even though they're teenagers and we need that space, thirteen and seventeen-year-olds kind of aren't everything in common. So the things that they deal with every day, our plan is that they will be able to have a round table to be able to work on their social, emotional skills and talk through some of the situations that they dealt with throughout the day. While we'll have, uh, people there to help us with that as far as social workers and things. Um, we also work with Urbana School District right now. We haven't dealt with them as much as we did during COVID. With COVID, we did all the, um, remote learning at the daycare. So we would be in touch with the schools, communicating with them what the children need, where they need help at, so that we can help them as well as bringing the parents in. This space, uh, is the va, restaurant that was La Fiesta. So it used to be a vacant space for, when we go in there, the last thing that we see that was updated was twenty-fourteen. So that space has been vacant since at least twenty-fourteen. Um, and we've changed it into the cafeteria where the kids will be able to go to eat lunch, where the daycare. Classrooms, they won't have to eat in the classrooms. They'll be able to go to the cafeteria, leaving more space in the classrooms to be able to do different activities. Um, so these are just a couple of the classrooms. The one you see, Ms. Jasmine, is our infant room, which is increasing our space. Currently, we only can have twelve infants. That space can actually be broken into two classrooms, giving us space for twenty-four infants instead of twelve. Um, our school age room currently, for the ones that are from kindergarten until twelve years old, because currently we just get CCRS students. Um, and so this, the school age classroom right now can have twenty-four. This space allows us to have twenty-eight, so it gives us four more school age children. But the other space allows us to continue the thirteen to seventeen-year-olds and bring those in as well. So the funding that we would be using is obviously to help us with acquiring, we already have the space. We have, um, the lease with our current landlord is the same landlord that owns ASPCA. So we already have that ability to have the space acquired and we're starting the work now. We're just getting the work done so that we can transition and get the license from DCFS-approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready for questions?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to questions. I know, it's me. I'm composing myself. Um, I read through your application and your application, uh, mentioned you'd be planning for fifteen to thirty teens. You just said thirty to forty teens. Um, but my, my main question is, you've already leased this space and according to your application, that went from a ten thousand to twenty-two thousand dollar a month obligation.
Yeah, so we, we haven't signed the lease with them yet. They are the ones that are helping us do the work though. So it's one of those things that we know we're getting the space. Um, we just haven't signed the agreement until we get it licensed. Because in order for us to move from one space to the other, they have to have our space available. So once that space is available, we'll mu, move completely so that they can renovate our space to whoever they're gonna renovate it to.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned a couple of different spaces. Are they connected in some way or how are you planning to manage those?
Yeah, so, so actually, it's all ASPCA. You have an entrance into, um, Sunny Crest Mall, which would enter into the teen side, because DCFS has so many licensing and regulations. Um, we cannot have our children who are in DCFS, um, the licensing, they can't enter through the mall to get into the daycare. So it's actually, um, two different suite numbers. It's the same seventeen seventeen South Philo, but it's different suite numbers. One is thirty-five and one is thirty-six. Um, so there's a back entrance that is a lot, and all the doors are locked on those. So the back entrance, we will use for the daycare and then the Sunny Crest would be used for the teen room. And then the cafeteria, you can actually enter through the daycare as well.
Um, I looked at your, your budget breakdown. You almost have a, a million dollars in personnel. How many, um, new positions are you planning and how many, um, do you currently employ?
So we, we currently, at the time that we did this, we had twelve, but we are hired, just hired three new teachers. So we currently have fifteen, um, teaching staff. And then with the new program, we're hoping to add eight. And, um, Ms. Judy was talking about having their salary set at about thirty thousand for each one.
Um, I'm sorry, I'll ask the same regrettable question of, um, if we're not able to do the full amount, is there another amount that would still make a helpful contribution to this effort?
I, I think any amount is, is helpful as far as, you know, the work that has to be done to the center itself. Um, if you can see in the, the construction costs alone of seventy-six thousand dollars of what we've already got as the proposed amount for fixing the floors, doing the walls and all those things. Um, and like I said, we've been in business for fifty years and we currently have sixty-some children, um, that are childcare resource. And we also have three families that are DCFS, um, payment. So we also have a waitlist already, so filling those spots is not gonna be a problem, especially now that we were able to hire the, the new staff and then hiring eight new people, we would be able to max out. Um, cause our waitlists are pretty long for all age groups. We have at least fifteen to twenty.
Thank you. Um, I am gonna ask a similar question to what I asked last time too. It's how many of your, um, families that you're serving now are from Urbana?
Currently, our families from Urbana is about ninety-five percent. We only have one family that is in Champagne right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, uh, just crunching some numbers here. And if you were to pay, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars a month for four years, that's over a million dollars. Um, one year of eight salaries at thirty thousand is over, up to nearly, uh, two hundred, two, uh, two-hundred-and-forty thousand. So I, I get, my question is, is, um, um, you're not asking, you know, for enough money to cover kind of this vision. So my question is, do you have other funders or other sources of funding? Uh, you must, cause you've got fifteen employees already.
So we actually, we just, we're childcare resource-based actually. Um, and Ms. Judy is a penny pincher and she budgets everything. Um, a lot of our products, uh, materials and things like that, we do the grants for those through, um, Childcare Resource has a yearly grant where we can get the equipment. Um, we also was able to get, um, the SCRG and the CCRG grant, which has helped pay the salaries after the PPP from COVID that helped as well. Um, and again, once we get all those spots filled, we'll have that income as well to come in.
Um, so you said that most of your, your students, your kids are, um, CCRS children. They're, so I'm, uh, uh, well, I guess my other question is, the, you offer daycare services as well as after-school services.
Correct.
And you have parents that pay, um, for those services?
So we ha, all of our families, so again, back to the, um, through five percent is DCFS. So those parents do not have a co-pay. DCFS pays all of their childcare. Then we have the ninety, other ninety-five percent that is childcare resource. So either childcare resource will pay their whole amount or they have a co-pay. Um, so then that's based off of childcare resources and on the parents' income. But so all of our parents are at risk and low income.
Okay, thank you.
Were, were you gonna do this expansion despite ARPA availability?
We were trying to do it, um, we actually didn't, so the people who own Sunny Crest actually brought it to us first. And so then that, once they brought it to us, that's when we started doing the grants. So this is only the second grant that we ever even tried to get.
Brought the ARPA app, opportunity to you?
Yes.
Would you have done, oh, okay. I get one question. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next application or applicant is Creative Children's Center.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Anderson. And for, first and foremost, I want to thank you all for this opportunity to come before you. Uh, the Creative Children's Center project, which is a not-profit expansion of Bundles of Joy Learning Center, we're asking for two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars for new construction and to add two staff members. What will be the lasting impact of this project after ARPA funds run out? The National Institute of Child Health and Human Development Study of Early Childhood Care has found that the benefits of high-quality care accrue not just to the parent and the child, but to the society generally. They include lower costs for later schooling as children enter school, better prepared to achieve, future reductions in crime as juvenile delinquency diminishes, increased productivity and lower need for social services. Working parents face fewer child-related absences or terminations and remain more securely attached to the labor market. Early childcare prepares children for primary schooling. So good childcare readies children for primary education. The cost, quality and outcome study report that children enrolled in higher-quality childcare, such as in Creative Children's Center, will display better math skills through second grade and have significantly higher reading scores. And by age twenty, will be more likely to have completed high school and to have lower rates of juvenile criminal activity. Taxpayers are likely to save in future schooling costs primarily through reductions in special education and grade retention and potentially from citizens who gain through reduced crime and public assistance costs. Creative Children's Center will be sustainable within a year. Why would this project be the best use of city ARPA funds? The Secretary, Secretary General of the UN acknowledges that the better and more cost-effective places to stop the cradle-to-prison pipeline is to close the beginning of that pipeline as soon as possible. Ending violence in children's lives and investing in early childhood is first and foremost a question of children's rights. Further supported by scientific evidence which shows that violence-free early childhood matters, the first thousand days of a child's life are the foundation for the person's whole future development. Violence in early childhood is a stressful, painful experience for a child in the immediate term with additional risks of mid- and long-term consequences. Children's optimum physical, intellectual and social-emotional potential depends on receiving loving care and enjoying and nurturing environment. Intervening early not only saves young lives from being wasted, but also prevents the onset of adult criminal careers and reduces the likelihood of youth or multiple traumas. Creative Children's Center may need to refer the child and the family to community-based service where they can get more extensive care. We need to know when the, when to refer to community-based service and to create and regularly update a list of possible resources. Then we'd like to meet with the parents and discuss a potential referral. Why are we, are you confident you can use these funds for, per federal guidelines and achieve demonstratable results in the required timeline? Creative Children's Center currently serves ten families from Urbana out of our proposed twenty. We have just historically shown that we can follow through on all our deliverables and submit reports according to requirement. We have a solid, efficient grant design, a program development, effective tracking and sufficient resources to manage the process smoothly. Grant management means working with all our key stakeholders in our organization to develop our strategy around grants, identify grant opportunities, implement specific grant awards and evaluate successful product and streamline future proposals.
Move on to council questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, you talked a lot about the impact of violence. Is there a specific part of like a curriculum that's focused on violence prevention?
It's just in helping to train children in self-help skills and to teach them how to cope with different things that are going on in the world.
You mentioned, um, adding twenty more, um, youth. Did you say that you'd be adding staff as well? How many staff?
It's two staff and we would be adding ten more. We currently have ten from Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize to you and everyone else applying too so far that this isn't letting me in the applications again today. So I have not gone through all the applications and I absolutely will. Um, in the meantime, I was wondering if you could share a little more with your current setup? Is this like early childhood head start kind of thing or what's the model of your current operations?
We currently serve in Bundles of Joy, uh, age six to twelve. Um, so we, um, have the, um, infant room, we have our infant room, we have a, uh, mobile infant room and a non-mobile infant room, two preschool rooms and then a two-year-old room as well as a school age room. And now that school age room only serves ten, so, and those ten are from Urbana, so we will add ten more.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm looking at your budget, um, from the proposal, uh, which goes through twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
Um, what, what would your plans be for twenty-twenty-four?
Uh, we plan on to continue plan, uh, applying for grants and doing fundraisers to help fund it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Pass.
I guess what I, what I would like to know is, um, more, more about the curriculum that you use now regarding, I mean, um, your violence prophylactic type of, of, of model that you said that you're, that you wanna expand to or that you are expanding to or have already done. Could you give me an, an idea of a, a lesson plan of sorts?
Yes. What we're wanting to do with the expansion is to have more hands-on skills, helping them with their reading, writing, but also teaching them to cook, uh, self-help skills. Um, also to have people come in and teach you how to change a tire and some of the things I never experienced and know how to do. Have dance classes in there and, you know, just different music classes where they learn how to play piano or different other instruments as well. Right now, our curri, our curriculum is creative curriculum, which is more geared toward the younger children.
So just so I understand, you're located in Champagne?
Yes, ma'am.
And you want to use the ARPA funds to build on to your center in Champagne?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
It's a house for Urbana children.
Do you have a waitlist or how will you recruit those ten Urbana families if you're in Champaign?
Yes, we do have a waitlist. And a lot of our children that come in even from Urbana, they have other siblings that are already there. So they would like to place their children in one spot.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then to clarify, you saying that you would be able to recruit additional ten families that are from Urbana specifically?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my other question is, what other funds have you, um, or have you applied for?
Uh, this is our first grant that we have applied for.
Okay.
Are we out of questions?
Okay, um, the other thing I want to know, okay, well, you said this is the first grant that you've applied for?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how, how have you sustained and how do you plan to sustain how things go after? If, if you get granted even a portion of these funds?
Right now, our other children that we serve are all CCAP children. I think we have one that's DCFS that's, uh, um, that we get. We also apply for the grants that are through Childcare Resource for materials and things like that. So we would do additional fundraisers and apply for additional grants.
So are you currently applying for those grants with the CCR people?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this isn't your first grant that you apply for?
Just for materials, those are more for materials, not for, um, to use to access staff or more children in there, yes.
Okay.
Just curious, do you operate as a not-for-profit or for-profit business?
This would be a not-for-profit.
Not-for-profit.
Yes.
You're currently operating not-for-profit?
The, the, the children's creative program would be not-for-profit. Our now process is for-profit, yes, ma'am.
So that-
Bundles of Joy is for-profit.
So Bundles of Joy is for-profit, but the, the new program is not-for-profit?
Yes, ma'am.
So on your application, I just want to be clear, it says, it says a thousand dollars per child times twenty, which is the two, the ten you have existing and the ten you'll have, times twelve, which is a year, um, and that would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so is that the sort of like profit that you will, or not profit, but-
We're hoping to get-
That you will be able to run on?
Yes.
So, um, so the two sixty is primarily for the two staff and expanding? And then after that, you'll be able to sustain the two employees that you hire? Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, um, hey, I don't get this much time. Have you, um, applied for any funding with Champaign and, and their ARPA funds or anything like that?
No, I haven't, no, I haven't. We just received a not-for-profit organization.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Urbana School District one sixteen for the Urbana School District Alternative Education.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Hary Tatum, Superintendent of Schools.
And I'm Joey Malt, I'm Executive Director of Secondary Multilingual and Alternative Education Programs for the district.
Um, thanks for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. We are here to talk a little bit about the Urbana School District Alternative Center. Right now, uh, we are, Joe will, uh, talk about that a little bit, offering some after-school services. Very minimally, uh, to get started. Um, but we are going to be expanding this program to offer some, um, resources and programming during the day. So we're developing a restorative therapeutic program alternative focusing on the whole child. ARPA funds will be designated for building renovations. Um, we are currently renovating the two buildings across the street from Urbana Middle School. Hopefully people have seen those, uh, buildings coming together in the last couple of months. The ARPA funds will include, uh, funding for repairs, um, technology improvements, uh, refurbishing the whole space to make it a more of an alternative learning space. As you know, um, the city and the district have seen firsthand the direct results of gun violence and its impact on our students and our families. This project will support our youth, deal with the root causes of gun violence and find creative ways to repair the harm in our community.
So what will be the lasting impact after ARPA funds run out? So speaking specifically to our alternative programming and being intentional in serving students that have been either directly or indirectly impacted by community violence, gun violence, we hope to see an increase in proficiency, academic proficiency and growth in academic areas, credit acquisition in secondary, high school education, as well as credit recovery for students that are, have fallen behind in their high school graduation pathway. Uh, we also would anticipate an increase in parent and community engagement in regard to those families impacted by community violence and gun violence. An increase in personal and civic engagement in the Urbana community. Uh, as Dr. Hary Tatum mentioned, we've already started a small-scale alternative program after school with a lot of students who have experienced, um, this type of, of violence. And we have engaged in different civic engagement activities already with them, with different organizations in the community already and seeing great results there thus far. We would like to increase the entrepreneurship opportunities for students and workforce readiness skills and financial literacy skills. As a part of our alternative programming, um, currently we are developing those financial literacy skills with students through budgeting, through, um, money management, et cetera. Additionally, we anticipate direct improvements in school-related behavior, school-related issues, um, that oftentimes are interrelated with community issues. So a decrease in gun-related incidents at school, um, a positive impact on discipline events at our secondary schools, meaning a decrease in suspensions, a decrease in expulsions, out-of-class referrals and particularly the behavior that leads to those, um, consequences. An improvement in the use of restorative practices, as Dr. Hary Tatum mentioned, being really intentional in, uh, we could talk through the curriculum piece in a moment in regards to how we would work with students who have been impacted by gun violence through restorative practices, conflict resolution and effective coping skills. Overall, an improvement in the social, emotional and mental health and well-being, stability of our students and families. And overall, a decrease in the number of legal infractions of students, um, of repeated issues and/or being preventative before an issue could, could take place and interactions with police.
So why is this project the best use of city ARPA funds? One, and I think one of the most important, is it really does strengthen the partnership between the city and the school district. Um, we envision this space to be a collaborative space, uh, where we would be able to, um, invite city projects, city engagement opportunities, um, within our space, uh, to collaborate more than we do now. We want this to be a safe space for our youth and families, uh, that are most vulnerable to gun violence, the therapeutic collaborative environment. Uh, we're really having an impact on the post-secondary trajectory of our students. Um, we're seeing some dips in our graduation rate. We know a lot of our youth have been impacted by COVID. Um, and this will help hopefully get them on a different path. It would become a year-round space, uh, that we can, um, provide trauma-informed counseling and practices throughout the year, um, not just when school is in session. Um, community members, business owners, tradespeople, mentors, uh, we want to provide work-based, uh, skills training for the students. And of course, civic engagement. Our overall goal is to raise good citizens and so we feel like this is a really great way to do that. How will we, um, manage these funds? So, uh, as you know, uh, our district has, um, a longstanding reputation for managing federal, state and local grants. We're very fiscally responsible. The monies that we are asking for are primarily for the one-time construction renovation costs, um, as well as some, um, future therapeutic, trauma-informed, uh, groups. We're going to continue to work with CU Try, who we work with now, um, Youth and Family Peer Alliance, um, and some other groups. The district is going to pick up the recurring costs for cleaning, um, maintenance, uh, all the things that will go into keeping this space a viable space for the next three years and forevermore.
Council questions?
Hello, thank you. I'm looking at student stipends. How many students are you planning to host in, in the alternative school?
Sure, currently we are serving, uh, we have twenty students enrolled right now. On average, our average daily attendance is about fourteen, fifteen. Uh, we hope to expand to fifty students. That would be both after school and during the day. We could serve, uh, our goal for this spring semester is twenty students during the day and fifty in the evening, so seventy total. Some of those students might be the same students during the day and, and after school.
Middle schoolers and high schoolers.
Yes.
So right now, the students that are coming are high school students.
So ages eleven through eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It sounds like you've partnered with some other community organizations. Is there, do you think, possibilities for partnering with others? Or what do you see that relationship with lots of these other organizations in the community?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, we have already a well-established relationship with CU Try. Uh, we've been working with Karen Sims for quite some time, so that was a, a really no-brainer relationship. Um, and the Youth and Family Peer Alliance has already some well-established, uh, trauma-informed, uh, youth, uh, interactive, uh, activities and groups. So those were the two, uh, groups that we started with because we were already working with them. But we also see, uh, the potential even just listening to some of the people talking here tonight, um, about some additional ways that we could, um, bring people into the space. We've reached out to, uh, other groups as well, um, about working with some of our young people. So, we, we see this as a community space, uh, really around this very specific population of youth.
Thank you for being here tonight. Um, I have a question because we, we heard on Monday from a city proposal about the, um, a future for the Self-Made Kings program moving into the school district. So my question is, is there, uh, are there intersections with existing or proposed, um, things that we're doing between the city and the school district? Thinking of the Self-Made Kings thing, is there an overlap here? Or are there other existing programs that this will have some overlap with that will strengthen?
I can start on that. So the Self-Made Kings has been, um, rolled into the after-school program that's already existing at the Alternative Ed Center. Um, and so what, the proposal on Monday, that type of position would help us strengthen and maintain that, the Self-Made Kings, but also expand it down to middle school. So we're working on plans to have a pathway for eighth-grade boys to move into, almost, um, looking at Self-Made Princes, moving into Self-Made Kings at the high school level, as well as developing girls groups that are very similar under the umbrella of the Alternative Ed program and, and facility, but also that position and, and the people that were working in the programs to develop more of those intervention groups for students.
Just to clarify a little bit, so this space, that program would be working in this space?
That's right.
Yes.
It already is and we would expand it even further.
Right now, the person who is kind of filling that space is a, an Urbana high school teacher. So of course they're teaching during the day, so they're only available to work with the youth after school. So adding that position as a full-time, year-round position really broadens our reach and the number of students we're able to work with.
And help expand partnerships, back to the question before that.
How many staff?
So we currently have five staff members already that are part-time. I'm a full-time position, but through the district, uh, we have grant funding for the after-school programming for five staff. We're looking at also hiring, uh, two full-time teachers for the daytime program plus additional support staff, mental health professional staff and other types of staff that can just be there as a support, like a teaching assistant. Um, we're looking at five staff members during the day. Uh, to build up to that, we won't start with that quite yet, um, until we have the number of students that would yield that need.
And just to clarify, Chris, the, um, the, the amount of money that we're asking for is not to cover any of those positions. The district is going to be, um, you know, taking, recouping those funds through our grants and through our district funding. So we're not asking for personnel.
Yep.
Um, my question is, is basically this, because I know that you're working, uh, with at-risk youth and, and youth that may need the alternative space, uh, to be more open and so on and so forth. Will you also be working with their families? Because-
Yes.
Teach, parents are the first teachers. And, um, I think it's important that, um, um, a wholesome, uh, holistic type of, of environment be- So will their families also be included with counseling, so on and so forth?
Yep. As part of the, um, the collaboration we have with CU Try and other organizations is to wrap around the student and the family, as well as we have a Freedom Schools grant that's funneled to the state of, um, is being owned by State Board of Education that requires family engagement and being part of the steering committee that meets regularly to provide feedback on how the program is going and how we're serving their students. So, uh, we had an event earlier this evening and are planning for those parent engagement events moving into next semester as well in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, um, explain a little bit more about the, the student that you'll have in this school? Is this an alternative to, to being suspended from school? Is it a way to keep them in the educational system? I, I, can you clarify that?
Yes, it'll be a, a mixture, a combination of an alternative to suspension. It would be a placement for expelled students potentially, um, as well as, uh, we're hoping the majority of students would be in intervention before reaching that level of need. Um, so it would be, what we're planning for the spring semester is students would be enrolled partially at Urbana High School and partially at our Alternative Ed Center, but for specific classes and specific times of the day. So if a student has failed English one oh one twice or, right, uh, just as a basic example, they could take English one oh one at the Alternative Ed Center, but continue taking Biology at Urbana High School. And it would be a, a hybrid schedule for them as an intervention before reaching that higher level of need. Uh, but it would serve all of those students at every level.
Oh, timer went off. Yeah, I was busy writing, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last presentation before the break is the Greater Champaign County Ambucks for the Ambucks Park Wellness Upgrades.
Hello, I'm Chris Vowles, I am an Ambucks member here in Urbana.
And I'm Keith Jameson, as well an Ambuck member. I'm a charter member of this club, which dates me back to nineteen eighty-one, being, uh, starting in the, in the club. Child labor laws were not enforced as strongly back then, I guess, but, yeah, I, I persevered. And, but the, our club, uh, largely, our mission is to help physically challenged in creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities. And we were chartered in eighty-one and, uh, right off, trying to meet the, the goals of that mission, uh, our club started building wheelchair ramps for people in the community that couldn't afford it. And it wasn't long after that, that, uh, on a national level, um, Amtrikes were, uh, designed and built and we started, uh, providing Amtrikes to, to people that needed those as well. But while that's all fine and good, it doesn't really, uh, reach the community. And since we're based here in Urbana, we wanted to do something for Urbana and that's when our club adopted what was then Woodland Park. Um, and we started, uh, looking what we could do there. And in nineteen ninety-two, we built a, a handicap accessible, uh, playground there. And it was one of the first in the community. And right now, you can't build anything without meeting ADA, uh, compliance. With that, playground got tore down and rebuilt in, uh, twenty thirteen. So we're in our second playground there. We've built, uh, pavilions, sidewalks. We've invested, uh, in that playground for a long time. And I was looking back at some of the, uh, charts that go back twenty-five years almost, some of the master plans for that park, there was a pathway around that park then. So this has been something that's been, uh, in our sights for a long time. And, uh, with our club, you know, we're asking for this, but it's something that our club takes nothing from it. We're all volunteer, we work it, we fundraise for it, we go out and build it most of the time. Um, we've worked a lot with the city and with the, the Park District on the things we do out there. But along with, uh, what we're asking, we're going to put twenty thousand of our own toward it. And, um, this is something that, uh, is a long-term thing. I can't think of anything much more sustainable or should, dare I say, concrete than a sidewalk. or should, dare I say, concrete than a sidewalk. Um, it's, it's something that will be there and you, it's one of those, build it and they will come. Uh, you put a sidewalk or a walking path around a, a park and people show up. And this is community-wide. Um, that's a little history of what we're looking for. Chris has got some more details about the grant.
So, you'll see on the screen, this is a map of, uh, Ambucks Park, uh, located off University. And what, we have a couple pavilions there. We have a short path on the east, northeast side. But we really are asking for funding for the red marking. That's a one-mile walking pedestrian bicycle loop. So, we are requesting three hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars to fund that. That is the current funding amount, um, current price tag given to us by engineers who are looking at doing this. So, we are, it will, that dollar amount will fund that mile bike pedestrian loop. Uh, with an opportunity, we're hoping for an opportunity in the future to build on to that, to make it an ever, e- even wider path around the entire park. It will also help pay for the upgrading and I dot structures, rail and seating to treat all the runoff from road and parking lot that putting more concrete in would do. And we're asking for part of that money to go towards an installation of an ADA water fountain near the current playground that we have. Some of the reasons we're asking for this, first of all, we're investing in Urbana. We believe that that's a great park, but it can be, uh, made even better. Right now, there's no walking paths supported in this particular area of town. There are several businesses there. There is, uh, some community neighborhoods. Um, they've already been identified as a block group levels of social vulnerability, um, as defined by the CDC. Um, adding an accessible, low-maintenance recreational opportunity with physical and mental health benefits to this neighborhood, the employees and the businesses nearby, and the families that live in those neighborhoods closest to Ambucks Park. In addition to promoting physical health, such as a bike pedestrian walking loops, have been documented, um, in all kinds of research to increase the mental health, um, and make individuals feel safer, connecting generational gaps, connecting families and neighbors. This, uh, Ambucks Park is also the home ballfield to the Tom Doan's Challenger League. This is a, it, and they've been there for more than twenty-five years. And adding that walking path will provide a inclusive, physical, social wellness opportunities for individuals with disabilities and the athletes who are there playing already, but maybe just a little too big or too old to take advantage of the playground. So, this is another opportunity to give them a chance to use that park to the best advantage, as well as everyone in the Urbana City and wide.
Thank you. We'll move on to council questions.
Uh, if there were less funding, would it be proportional to the amount of sidewalk? Like, would it be possible to do not a loop, but a connecting piece if there were not the full amount?
Well, the, the reason we're going for a loop is because research shows that that loop is, gives a better sense of safety to people. They know where they're going. They're coming back to the same place. There's lots of research back there supporting that. Also, there's really, just a straight shot would just be a sidewalk going through from one, from the middle of the park to the east of Cottage Grove. I don't know how else we, I mean, this is just one piece of what we hope to be a larger path around the park. Um, we have not discussed making it smaller because we felt this was the best, best scenario.
Thank you. Uh, can you confirm something for me? I don't believe there is sidewalk along University Avenue on either side there, right? So
So, there's really not, there's a short piece in front of the MTV.
Right, on the south side. There is some.
But on, on the side where the park is, there, there's no way.
Nothing.
It doesn't look like there's any way to access it from the, the neighborhood to the, to the west there.
But this, this would reach out
Like a sidewalk.
To Cottage Grove.
Yeah, okay.
Proposing, yes.
All right, thank you.
Have you identified a contractor to pour your sidewalk? You'd put this out to bed or?
Yeah, it would be put out.
We kind of went through this, what?
Ten, twenty-twelve.
Yeah. And, and so, uh, revisiting this, uh, we, we, we went to the engineer and they gave us an idea of what kind of increase to expect right now. So, we think we're pretty spot-on on, on it, but we're, if you know a good contractor, but this
Well, you need the money first, right?
So, we went back to the contractor who gave us a twenty-twelve-dollar amount then, but we were unable to, to build it at that point. And they basically said, increase it about forty-five percent in today's funding, and this is what it's going to cost you.
My question, because I, I used to do a lot of walking, um, is the, the length that you've identified is, is it because, does it come out to be like one mile? And people kind of like to stick to, is that what you're thinking? The length of concrete that you need is?
That's a good, good spot to be at. Um, there's a park behind my house. It's eight tenths of a mile. And that's pretty darn close, and it is constantly being used. Um, so, I, I, I don't know what it is about that, that length, but I think it's one that works pretty good, that brings people out. You're not bored if it's something really short. Because we've got some little sidewalks around the playground equipment, but I don't ever see anybody walking around that.
Yeah, because, well, I see it, the red, it's the red portion, right?
That's right.
The red would be the new portion, yes.
And so, that's why I was asking, because, um.
So, that's a part, an area of the park that's not currently used very much. And it is a way to connect the current sidewalks near the pavilion to Cottage Grove Street as well. So, that's, and it would make good use of the areas that are not yet being used in the park.
Okay, thank you.
I'll pass.
I think it's in here somewhere, but I apologize. Is it, uh, just a walking path or a walking and biking?
Well, it would be a wide enough path to, for both pedestrians, bikes, and of course, wheelchairs or other strollers, anything else that needs. We want to make sure it's inclusive for everyone.
Have you approached the Park District to help with funding with this?
So, we were collaboratively with the Park District on all kinds of projects. But this is not one we're asking them for funding with, but they would, we will, like all the rest of our projects in that park, turn it over to them to help maintain. Um, we'd work together to see what works best. Certainly, they will, um, talk with us about it. It is an Urbana park, um, but we have not asked them for funding, no.
So, to dig into that a little bit deeper, um, would you have the relationship with the contractor? Or would the Park District have the relationship with the contractor? And the reason why I'm asking that, they may have certain, um, goals that they're trying to set with regard to who they use as contractors, you know, regionally, or minority-owned or women-owned businesses. That's why I want to know.
Usually, anything we do there.
If you're going to hire the contractor, you're doing it, if they're hiring the contractor, they're going to follow their path.
Yeah, we, we look to the Park District, and we're with them. We get their okay on anything we do out there.
So, who has the relationship with the contractor?
The Park District.
So, they'll hire, hire the contractor?
I would think so, right? Isn't that the way it's worked?
Okay.
I think so.
It's the way it's worked in the past.
Thank you.
So, yes.
I'm going to ask, ask a really kind of, I should know this. What does Ambucks stand for? A.M.B.U.C.K.?
American Business Clubs.
American Business Clubs.
So, yep.
Okay.
That's the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to take a ten-minute break, and then we'll resume right around eight-thirty. Thank you. Okay, we'll get started in about a minute. Thank you. And we'll invite the Illinois Football Club, Illinois FC Youth Soccer Program up. You may begin.
All right. Well, hello, and, and thank you for accepting our application.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Skip Meyer. Uh, this is my colleague, Paul Hackman. We are both, uh, volunteer members of the Board of Directors of IFC. Uh, thank you for inviting us here and for accepting our application. Uh, IFC has been operating here in Urbana-Champaign for forty years, originally as the Little Illini Soccer Club, and, uh, most recently is the Illinois Football Club. Uh, we are a membership-based organization. We're not-for-profit. All the funds that are generated through membership and other programs is invested back into the club so that we can expand our programs and provide, uh, opportunities for kids from the ages of three up to nineteen uh, to participate in high-level youth sport, particularly soccer. Uh, we were very negatively impacted, as many other youth sport organizations were, by the pandemic. Our programs had to be basically shut down for twelve to eighteen months. And as our programs were shut down, naturally, our, our membership dropped, uh, by more than sixty percent. And without the funds for membership, um, it was very difficult for us to keep our programs going, but we did. But, and now, as we come out of the pandemic and we're trying to grow the membership again, what we're looking for help, uh, with the ARPA funds is for funding our scholarship program. Soccer is the world's game, as you've, you've probably heard, if you've tuned into any of the World Cup over the past month or so. And on a very basic level, it is accessible to really anyone. All you need is a, an open space, a couple of friends, and a ball, and a game can be had. But as you advance in the game and as you look for more competitive sport, more organized sports, it does become cost prohibitive to some. Uh, for, to be, uh, a member of IFC, the costs, uh, can be anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a year. And that, those costs cover, uh, the rental of fields, indoor, uh, practice facilities, paying for coaches, paying for referees, paying for registration fees in the competitive leagues throughout central Illinois. On top of those membership fees, individual families and members, uh, have to pay for travel to competitive tournaments, and that will include hotels and food, et cetera. So, the costs we recognize can become prohibitive. And that make, that means our program is not accessible to all in the community. We have, as a club, been able to provide, uh, scholarships, uh, for families in the past. This is something we've al- already been doing. But as our, our funding has, has dwindled greatly over the past two years, uh, with the pandemic and the drop in our membership, uh, it has decreased the amount of scholarship money we've had available to us to provide. Because scholarships is really just coming from excess member dues that we are able to generate. So, again, our member dues pay for all the programs we have and all the, uh, the things that I described. And any excess funds that we might have had in the past could go to families who couldn't afford, uh, to pay the fees. But again, that number has gone, uh, gotten a lot lower, uh, as our funds have gotten lower. So, we're seeking funds to help us greatly expand our scholarship program, um, and hopefully provide opportunities for many more youth in the Urbana-Champaign area to be part of IFC and be part of the benefits, uh, that high-level competitive sport can provide. In terms of the lasting impact of this project, our hope is that, uh, with the funding that this might provide over the next two to three years, that we can begin to reinvest those other funds that are generated through membership and, and develop a long-term lasting fund so that this scholarship fund can live on beyond the, the ARPA funds. Right now, we're not able to do that. All, as I said, all the extra money we generate goes to, to the scholarships that are needed. So, we're only able to fund the number of scholarships that we have excess funds for. That could be, in a given year, that could be five, that could be ten. Uh, this past year, we funded twenty-five scholarships, uh, and quite honestly, that was to the financial detriment of the club because it was probably more than we could afford. But we simply didn't want to turn away families that needed money and that wanted to participate in the club. So, the lasting impact, again, is we hope to be able to establish this as a longer-term, uh, project. Not to mention the impact that this could have on the experiences gained by the kids that would, that would be benefiting from these scholarships that wouldn't otherwise. So, that includes not just the fene- physical, mental, and academic benefits that research has shown that team sports provides, uh, the long-term relationships that we are able to build within the club, uh, across, uh, cultural and, and class boundaries. Um, and it's really, provides a springboard to more opportunity for these kids in terms of being able to travel outside of the area, going to, uh, other places where they not, may not otherwise go, exposing them to opportunities related to college scholarship through sport, and, and potentially introducing to, them to careers, uh, whether that be playing, coaching, being involved in organizing recreational soccer leagues or being involved in a club like ours. Why would this project be, uh, a, a good use of, of ARPA funds? Uh, one of the, the funding goals of the concept plan was to improve accessibility, uh, to youth programming. And that's, that's really what we're talking about here. We recognize that, uh, the programming we're providing, uh, is not accessible to all, and we would really like, uh, for any one player and family who has the ability to, to play high-level soccer and has, um, the wherewithal to dedicate the time to do it, we don't want the only barrier to them participating to be financial. Uh, we're confident that we can use these funds in accordance with guidelines.
Presentation time is up, so we'll move on to council member questions. And it starts with James.
All right, thank you. Um, you talked about, uh, this primarily being about scholarships. And I'm looking at the breakdown of the budget, uh, which has a, uh, direct monetary assistance to community members. That's about ninety thousand dollars, which is about twenty-five percent of the total three hundred and sixty thousand asked. How does, how does the other parts of this budget request translate into scholarship?
Well, the idea is, it, we, we estimate the cost for a given player to participate in, in our club annually at about two thousand dollars. Uh, so, when we think, what we're asking is, we're hoping to expand the scholarship program to up to sixty players annually. So, that's where we're, we're getting to that number. So, if we were able to fund sixty players annually at roughly a two thousand dollar scholarship, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It says in your summary that you're going to, uh, this season, you're fielding two girls' teams, and you'll have five boys' teams.
At the high school level, yes.
At the high school level, okay. Um, I'm a baseball, football, basketball guy, so, how many on a team? And, and so, like, my big question is, how many youth are you thinking you, you serve?
Right now, uh, we have not just the, over the high school teams, but we have eighteen teams from the ages of eight up through nineteen. Those are the competitive teams. We have programs for, for younger kids as well. Uh, on a typical competitive team at the high school level, you have between eighteen to twenty-one on a given team. So, again, across the club right now, uh, our membership is, uh, a little bit over two hundred. We'd like to see that grow back to where we were, uh, before the pandemic, which is about three hundred, uh, players. And again, uh, at present, uh, scholarships have only accounted for about ten percent of our membership, and we'd really like to see that grow, uh, to be about twenty percent.
Excuse me. Okay, so, my, my question is, how do you anticipate, um, the funding, even if it's a portion of it? How do you an- anticipate the positive growth of your teams? Do you, and how do you manage, how will you sustain that after that those, that those funds are gone?
That's a good question. One of the things that i- in the past, um, we just, um, took in scholarship requests as they came. And what we realize is that we can have a greater impact if we are proactively going out in the community and looking for players and families that never would have found us otherwise because they know we're, we're out of reach for them financially. So, we know that there are, there are opportunities out there to reach families that we're not currently reaching if we proactively reach out to them. And we think, um, we'll greatly expand into parts of the community where we're not already. Um, you know, there are certainly parts of the community that we're serving well, um, but there are other parts that we're simply not reaching. So, our hope is that, you know, we'll get players from, um, other, um, ethnic groups and other parts of the community that we're not getting right now.
I just want to make sure I, I understand your proposal. You are requesting three hundred You are requesting three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and you intend to go to up to sixty children each year at two thousand dollars each, which is different from what your proposal stated. And I remember your budget included sixty thousand dollars for rent and overhead. Was that coming out of this three hundred and sixty thousand?
No, that, the, the, no, it was not. Go ahead.
Oh, that's just part of the two thousand dollars per child was, part of it's, all that goes towards rent, it goes towards coaches.
Okay.
So that was just a separate breakdown of the two thousand.
So when, when you look at the, again, the overall budget of the club is basically a representative of how many players we have. So if we have, you know, roughly two hundred and fifty players and we budget two thousand dollars a player, that covers our rental costs, everything. So we're, we were just breaking down the cost.
So all of these funds would go to the kids?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you talk about how you would make sure these funds were going towards Urbana residents?
I mean, I don't think we can. I mean, part of what Skip said about being proactive, going to those communities, is one way we can do it. We, we already have probably about half of our scholarship players come from Urbana already. But yeah, being able to contact those groups, connect with coaches for the high school or other people in those communities is how we would recruit more Urbana players. But yeah, I, I would imagine some of the funds would go. We have, we have scholarship players from all over Champaign County.
And to sort of drill down a little bit more on that outreach, I saw that you collaborate with such organizations as Dream. Can you kind of talk about how that came to be and how, if that will be continuing? How many students from, from that organization and, and then I'll, I guess I'm asking too many questions. Go ahead.
I, I can't tell you how it came about. Our Director of Coaching set that up. I participated in it this summer. I think it was the first time we did it this summer. We did a camp, a two-day camp over on Bradley Avenue where we worked with about a hundred kids from Dream. So it was part of their summer camp. But yeah, I imagine it would continue.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll continue in the soccer theme, Soccer Planet Expansion. Go ahead.
Sorry, Akeem Von Bodman, co-owner Soccer Planet.
And Mark Sekora, co-owner Soccer Planet.
That's right. So we are kind of tied with IFC and a few other non-for-profits in the community as they all rent space from us. So one of the things that Paul was asked was, how does that money go back to Urbana? Well, it goes back to Urbana by renting from us. We are one of those spaces that, we're one of the costs that a lot of the non-for-profits have. And specifically, IFC, which is housed in Urbana, does pay for field time in Urbana. And so it does trickle into the tax dollars that, that we provide or we pay to the city of Urbana. And so that's one of the things I wanted to quickly clarify. So what we're proposing today is, again, the expansion of our business. Our business currently, they were talking a little bit about the impact of soccer, and you can see it in the, the numbers of kids playing. Every high school team, male and female, have many kids that are playing. Not many of them play for IFC because of the funding, but some of them now are starting to come into our leagues during the winter time and are going to go and probably play, hopefully, for a club somewhere at some point. So we do see lots of growth in, in soccer. And so part of our expansion is another building where we can help these non-for-profits continue to play in our facility. Our facility currently has one field, and it is, it is full, non-stop, every evening and every hour, basically, on weekends. The numbers that we, we have seen is estimated that about two hundred thousand people come through our facility right now. And so the expansion does provide additional space for more people to play. But our, our whole concept, our whole growth thought process or, or plan is to expand all the way from our facility on the fields all the way up to Frasca Fields. And at one time, there were supposed to be a lot of outdoor fields, but that obviously changed a little bit with Rantoul, but it doesn't change everything that much. The next part, phase of our expansion was supposed to be a full indoor court, but we've switched that now. Recovering from COVID, we, we, you know, we were set back a little bit and our, our expansion ideas had to slow down. This potentially gives us the chance to create that second building that we need, one, for, for space. But two, really to take advantage of another sport that's really growing, which is kind of half of the, the, the idea of using these funds to build, to start the build of, of our second building. I put up there that it's, it's mainly for pickleball. And what pickleball does is it creates, you know, additional community. It, it, currently, pickleball is played all over Champaign, in Lotta Park District Courts, on, on basketball courts. Kind of like when soccer, you know, was, there are soccer fields everywhere, but still, we have everybody coming through our facility that plays soccer, for the most part. They're willing to pay for it because it's organized and it's clean and, and it gives them a sense of community and hope. I mean, not, not hope, but a space to, to come and, and hang out, kind of socialize. So the pickleball demographic is, is people who want to play during the daytime. And our facility is often not used during the day. There are certain days that it is fully used by dog agility, but there are certain days where it is empty. And we have run certain programs for non-for-profits to come through and use our space for playtime, especially when the, when the weather isn't great. We kind of want to expand on that a little bit in this facility as well, to always give kind of a home, a home for when the weather isn't great outside, somewhere to go for the community, for different kinds of things. We have different kinds of ideas for that. But overall, the concept of pickleball brings us another source of income that will allow us to, to continue to expand bringing people to our facility. And so one of the, you know, I, I submitted the, the information on, on our, our proposal with a lot of information about the different things that pickleball can do and bring into the space. But it's, one of the areas is really the, the, the community aspect where people hang out. Right now, we don't really have people hang out. They come to our space and then they go somewhere afterwards. Now, you know, hopefully, it's somewhere in Urbana, but they, they, as a team, go somewhere to hang out. Pickleball would allow us to expand in a kind of hangout area cafe kind of part where they play their game, they play their sport, and then they hang out with their friends for a little bit longer. And that is the kind of, the concept that exists around the world around soccer, where in many places, the soccer facility or the athletic club is the place where people get together and kind of hang out and, and, and socialize. And it, for us, we've heard during COVID times that they were really missing Soccer Planet because they missed their friends and the ability to hang out. So the lasting impact is quite obvious. We, we are a for-profit, so we do pay taxes. And if we expand, that increases, you know, the taxes that we pay to Urbana. So it's, you know, in essence, sort of a loan of some sort. So, you know, that is, is the overall concept for a second building. Like I said, we, we weren't expecting to go as quickly, but these funds might provide us that opportunity.
Thank you. We'll move on to council questions. And Chris.
So would you say that most, if not all, of the people that use your facility have to drive to your facility, a car?
There is a bus.
Because you are out there, right?
Yeah, we are out there. And, you know, that is certainly something that we hope changes as, as we help to expand north, north Urbana. But yes, there is buses that come by. And the, the, the people who use our facility during the day, they, like, the, the childcare facilities, they have their buses and, and they bring their kids in to play. But yes, most, most people have to get there. Now, they did just complete a sidewalk all the way through underneath the bridge and up to, you know, what road is that? Airport Road? It doesn't go all the way there, but there is a sidewalk that you can ride your bike to. But yes, you have to drive there, and there is a bus stop.
What are your fees like?
So we have a membership, and that's an annual membership, so people pay that. And then for field rental, it really depends. Big clubs like IFC, you know, they get a, they get a rate. And then, well, clubs tend to, our non-for-profit clubs tend to get a, a reduced rate, but what is the hourly rate? So he's also the coach of Parkland Soccer, and he rents it with Parkland.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the many things that we are doing and we continue to do is, is work with individual, like, kind of one-off groups. Friends of mine, I'm a teacher as well, and so I have friends of mine that work with things like Freedom School in the summer. And that rate, we might work with them. We will work with every group to use that space. And it's anywhere between, you know, fifty dollars an hour to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, depending on the need and the time and space like that.
And some for free. Like during COVID, we were in empty space, and we keep, kept telling the city, we're a big open space. If you needed it for a hospital, or, I mean, not hospital, but extra beds or anything like that, you know, let us know. So, yeah, we definitely try to use it as much as we can for, for whomever we can.
You're requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Your application stated that you'd use eighty thousand of that to pay taxes owed to the city. What taxes are those?
Not really. We've paid all, all of our taxes. That's more along the lines of recovering from COVID. So during COVID, we were shut down for a full year, no income, but still had to pay eighty thou, well, seventy-six thousand in, in taxes.
Property taxes?
Property taxes.
So you have paid those?
Yeah, we paid those.
So this, these funds would not be?
No, this, this is simply to get started on a building. It doesn't come close to the cost of what we're, we're trying to build. But it, it at least allows us to do operational expenses and maybe some, you know, things that produce that, that hangout facility kind of where, where people can hang out there a little bit longer than their game.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Have you utilized any other, there were like COVID-specific funds for businesses earlier in the pandemic? Did you make use some of those?
Yes, yeah, we, we definitely had PPC loan, and we had a, a couple of grants. And then we were able to square, to, to get the long-term SBA loan for, for some of our costs. So yes, we, we were able to get some. This is clearly for expansion.
And what's the typical demographic or age demographics for pickleball? You said this is, you know, a growing thing. Is it youth? Is it, you know, middle-aged adults or all of the above?
I would say majority older. From the somewhat research that I've done even personally to figure out the pickleball scene, if you will, here in Champaign-Urbana, I would say the average age is, is a bit older. Although, many of them have said, no, I, we go to tournaments. We, we, we play with our kids and our grandkids and such. So from a community standpoint, it's really exciting to think that if we can, we fuse the soccer age groups, which goes all the way as young as eighteen months in our, in our youngest programs, and then adding into the pickleball demographic, and you're talking up into the seventies and eighties, pretty much serving that wide range of age groups. But I would say right now, the pickleball is, the average is a bit older.
However, there are, the tournaments are quite large, and that would be one of the things that we constantly run, which would bring people in. Right now, people are going over to Indiana, but that, that would be people coming here and spending the night in, in Urbana and stuffs. But those tournaments have age brackets from, from youth all the way up. In fact, if you start to watch pro pickleball, you'll see that, like, some of the best players are now eighteen and nineteen. But really, it's, it's being expanded because it's the sport of choice, it seems, for the fifty, forty, fifty, and sixty.
Can you clarify the funding again? Because I think I'm getting confused on asked for the eighty for taxes. And if that's not true, then is that just one seventy in construction costs?
No, I mean, the, the, the construction costs are going to be considerable. They're going to be probably over, over two million. So this would simply be a construction, operation costs to buy us time for, for the facility to get fully running and self-sufficient.
Thank you.
So no taxes on that. Sorry.
Thank you. Next up is the Urbana Free Library Community Connections Youth Programming Specialist. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is, hello, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. My name is Celeste Chote. I'm the Executive Director of the Urbana Free Library.
And I'm Lauren Chambers. I'm the Programming and Outreach Manager.
As you know, youth, foreign-born residents, and others who are socially vulnerable have been greatly impacted by the pandemic, which caused people in these groups to struggle for a variety of reasons, including social isolation, changes in family income and educational experiences, and an increase in violence in our community. These struggles have, have had a negative impact on the lives of youth. To assist with pandemic relief for youth birth through age eighteen, the library requests just over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to hire a bilingual youth programming specialist who will create and run youth programming outreach. We're focusing on Spanish, French, or Mandarin as the languages we're looking for. The grant will cover wages and benefits, and part of the person's wages and benefits will be covered by a grant that we have from the Margaret Frampton Library Fund. Program supplies would be paid for by the library, potentially from grants from the Urbana Free Library Friends or Foundation. The specialist's efforts will focus on vulnerable areas of Urbana on the city's block group-level social vulnerabilities chart, including Learman, Silverwood, north and east of Carl Hospital, and University Cunningham Avenue. This person will partner with organizations that serve those areas and serve youth with families who speak multiple languages. Eighteen point three percent of Urbana's population is foreign-born, and nearly a fourth of households in Urbana speak a language other than Urbana, sorry, other than English at home. Of these foreign-born residents, the Champaign County Welcome Plan reported that thirty-three percent of them live below the poverty line. Needs are great. Events would be held both in the library and in the community in the neighborhoods, which would remove travel barriers to access youth programs. Offering bilingual programs addresses language barriers and, again, provides greater access. The positive impact of programs and outreach will begin as soon as the specialist is hired and trained. And evidence shows that the impact will be felt much longer. It will address the ARPA goal to increase accessible youth programming. Pre-literacy efforts and programs have been demonstrated to impact a child's life. Studies have shown that being read to increases a child's vocabulary and reading comprehension, which can lead to academic and other lifelong successes. A 2018 study published in the journal Pediatrics showed that positive, language-rich verbal interactions in the early years, such as at Storytimes, can have a positive impact on language acquisition up through middle school. Programs in English and other languages will encourage literacy in youth and their caregivers and provide a positive atmosphere for practicing reading skills. According to the Young Adult Library Service Association, over fourteen million teens are on their own after school. In that timeframe, three to six P M., is the quote-unquote "peak for juvenile crime and experimentation with drugs, alcohol, and cigarettes," end quote. The CDC released a report in 2016 that said that creating safe spaces where youth can connect with an adult who models nonviolent behavior and which promotes the growth of social skills or allows youths to explore their passions also contributes to reduction in library violence, sorry, in youth violence, also violence at the library. The library has a history, a proven track record of creating programs, such as the Teen Open Lab, that create a safe atmosphere in these ways. Making more programs available in multiple languages that promote the growth of social and emotional skills and hands-on skills in our youth, it gives our kids the opportunities to learn and model positive behavior to each other. It will combat the pandemic's negative effects.
To achieve these long-term goals, the bilingual programming specialist will be responsible for an estimated one hundred and fifty to two hundred programs or outreach events a year. And the library has averaged over four hundred youth programs per year for the past three years with about seventy-nine hundred attendees per year. So this would be a substantial increase in programming and outreach for us. The position would also vastly increase our ability to hold multilingual programs, which is a huge benefit to bilingual youth and their families practicing language acquisition skills in English and their native language. We strive to make all of our programs accessible, and like all programs held by the library, these programs would be free for participants, and a library card is not these programs would be free for participants, and a library card is not required to attend any of these programs. We are confident that we can use these funds in accordance with federal guidelines and achieve results in the allotted time. The library has existed for almost a hundred and fifty years and has a history of creating youth programs for birth through age eighteen. And we see adding this position as increasing our institutional and cultural infrastructure. We also have a history of creating community partnerships, averaging fifty partners a year with over a hundred, on over a hundred programs. And to start reaching socially vulnerable areas and begin making an impact right away, we would draw on existing partnerships such as the Park District and New American Welcome Center, who have already agreed to partner with us should we receive funding. And we would reach out to other groups as well. We plan to meet federal guidelines and reporting requirements, uh, through a variety of different methods. For an instance, we would ask attendees to fill out an anonymous self-reporting demographic survey based on categories, uh, that, for guidelines identified as those impacted by the pandemic. And though we are asking for funding for the programming specialist through twenty-twenty-six, the library is committed to making a permanent, this permanent position. We would continue to explore other outside funding op- options, as well as exploring options within our current funding until our operating budget fully covers the position.
Thank you. We'll move on to council questions, and I am Charisse. Thank you.
I thought it was you. Okay, um, I guess my question is, um, if you can't get the funds or be fully funded for this, do you have any other plans? Or are there any other grants that you can draw from to, um, make, make that hap- uh, make this position happen?
So this position is something that is following the mission statement of the library, which is encouraging learning by enriching lives, by providing access to diverse resources and programs. It's a board-stated priority. So we've already been looking within this year's budget how we can find some way to start a position like this. Currently, we can fund someone ten hours a week, but in order to get a great candidate that we can keep for a while to build those and continue those relationships, we need at least twenty hours a week, and of course, full-time would be ideal. So we have some money in the budget, and we would look for outside opportunities as well if this could not be fully funded. Or we could hire it twenty hours, we can go from there.
And as the application is written, this is for close to four years for this amount?
It's for the full-time period of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
You, you mentioned multiple languages that are being targeted by this position or would be. Um, are, do you have expectations in terms of fluency in some combination of those languages or one language? What, how would you kind of go about that?
We're looking for a person that at least speaks English and another language. Uh, we've had some job applicants for like circulation clerks and other positions who spoke multiple languages, and we want fluency in at least one. So, um, people here are talented, we'll see.
I was also about the budget, and you mentioned the operating budget and Charisse's question. Why wasn't that added? Like, we just approved the tax levy this past Monday without like an increase in the, or a five percent increase in the library budget. Is there not an opportunity to increase the operating budget for this position?
We will present our budget to you, and those kinds of things come through at that time. Back, and it, it'll come in June. So we're currently in the fiscal year fiscal twenty-three, and we can't ask for extra money other than this grant from the city until fiscal twenty-four starts.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, I was looking at the application, I noted you got an Illinois State Library Grant for some PPE over the pandemic. But to my understanding, the library didn't receive, libraries didn't receive specific ARPA funds or other grants to support them through COVID. Were, were there other, did, like the PPP programs, did, were you able to participate in those?
We participated in the one that we could. Um, other grants were geared more towards city, city budgets.
But there's been no ARPA funds to support libraries in the recovery from this?
Not, other than this opportunity that we've seen.
Thank you.
Um, I was gonna make you, uh, tell me all two hundred programs that you have planned. But I, I, I would like, I, I think we should just at least a quick overview. When you say programming, what do you mean? And, and not a whole lot of detail, but just something.
That's no problem. So by program, we're meaning we're going out to the community and we're presenting some sort of activity. Um, this could be a cultural activity, it could be STEM-based, um, it could be art-based education, where we're going out and teaching something or running perhaps a workshop for kids. That's what we consider a program, and outreach is when we, where we go out and we share information about the library, such as when we go to schools and we sign kids up for library cards or parents up for library cards.
My next question is, um, could you possibly, or have you looked into, um, regarding filling this position? Um, have you looked into getting somebody that, that interns from the Library Sciences at U of I and possibly folding them into the, that, this position, some kind of way?
We have the number one library school in the nation, so we certainly would be advertising to that group of people to see if they're interested.
Okay, but, but right now, we don't, we don't, we, I'm on the library board. We, we don't have a, um, a inter- an intern that can, that can fold into that position in some kind of way.
We do not have an internal candidate, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
So when you bring programs to the neighborhood, what kind of spaces do you need to do that in the neighborhoods?
It depends on the program in the neighborhood. We will work within whatever spaces we can. We have gone to schools before and brought teen open lab equipment, a three-D printer out, to do demonstrations and show them three-D printing and different things we have. But we'll work within whatever existing boundaries there are. If we have a small space, we plan for something that will work within that. If we have a larger space, we could plan for something where kids might be able to move around or we could accommodate more, uh, youth in the program. So we, we're used to going out to different places and being very flexible about what we present and how we make things work. We always try to make things work in whatever space we are in.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, my name is Janice Mitchell. I come to you tonight as the Executive Director of Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. And I want to present to you Operation UNCC Boost. So I want to start with, why would this project be the best use of city ARPA funds? Um, as many of us are aware, having supervised productive environments for youth to dwell in significantly decreases the likelihood of their gravitation towards violence, premature sexual activity, theft, and other idle or criminal activity. Um, granting us these funds would help us do just that. What will be the lasting impact of this project after ARPA funds run out? So through this project, we are proposing much-needed maintenance and cosmetic upgrades or full replacement of our three vehicles. Our newest vehicle is a twenty-twelve minibus, and the oldest is a two thousand nine minibus. We also have a thirteen-passenger van. The oldest minibus operated with minimal issues for approximately seven years while in our possession. It is now totally inoperable. The van and minibus are in need of tune-ups, and the newer minibus, um, that still operates could use a wheel alignment. Uh, signage with our most recent logo added to the van and minibus would be very helpful for students and staff trying to identify us at our pickup locations. We are also requesting funds to be utilized for the purchase and installation of an industrial fire sprinkler system. Once installed, this system would only require routine checkups. My final request is for any remaining funds not expended on our vehicles and sprinkler system to be used for purchasing clothing, school supplies, hygiene products, and winter apparel for Mrs. Mitchell's closet. This is a new initiative that has served upwards of fifty individuals and provided nearly two hundred items between its two locations since opening in October. Once ARPA funds run out at the commencement of the four-year granting term, with proper inspections and maintenance, we will still be able to run an additional route to pick up more students, as we currently serve around forty-five, but at one time, we were serving about sixty in our after-school program. Why are you confident, excuse me, why am I confident that I can use these funds in accordance with federal guidelines and achieve demonstrable results in the required timeline? Many of our grants do not cover transportation needs, and getting outside contractors out to the center to inspect and/or repair our vehicles during the COVID shutdown was nearly an impossible task, which prolonged getting the timely attention needed before becoming completely inoperable. Ensuring that we can provide safe, efficient transportation for youth directly from the schools to our facility aligns with federal ARPA, ARPA goal, Assistance to Impacted Nonprofit Organizations, two-point-three-four. Um, other considerable federal guidelines and demonstrable results we would achieve within the designated timeline include Addressing Educational Disparities, Academic, Social, and Emotional Services, two-point-two-five, and Healthy Child Environments, Childcare, two-point-eleven. We would have another layer of protection in the area surrounding the kitchen that would only require a ten-year inspection with likely no replacement during that timeframe. The items donated to families in Urbana are requested on a nearly, uh, day-to-day basis. Providing a child, teen, or parent with financial challenges, some assistance with basic human needs, helps to ensure that those other needs, such as academic achievement and development of positive self-concepts, are attainable. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to council questions, and I believe I'm first, um, just to confirm, you've asked for a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
And that, you expect to cover the industrial sprinkler system update plus, how many vehicles? You're not purchasing any vehicles, correct?
So we do have three vehicles currently, um, and if we were to do a replacement, it would be of the one vehicle that is inoperable.
So it'd be the sprinkler system plus one vehicle purchased?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Just to clarify for folks that they don't know, can you talk about, like, how many of the folks that you serve are Urbana residents?
Right now, one hundred percent of the students that we serve, K through twelve, are Urbana residents.
How many children do you transport currently now? And with this down van, how many are you transporting? But, I hope you understand what I'm saying.
I understand. Um, so, day-to-day, Monday through Friday, we have anywhere between forty-five and fifty students. It fluctuates, um, but it is right between like forty-five and fifty, uh, students that are coming on a consistent daily basis. Um, and so that's, we, and we pick up all of our students. So our buses run to all of the elementary schools in Urbana, Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School for pickup. Um, and what happens, and so I guess to just explain it a little bit more. Um, perfect example, the other day, um, we had a staff member that was out. So at the last minute, I drove a route. So I went to leave my first job to go to my second job to get the bus. And when I did the route, um, I realized that just from Dr. Williams Elementary School alone, it filled up the bus. So I had to drop off those students at the, um, the center, call Leo Elementary School, apologize, tell them that we were gonna be running late, and then go back out to Leo to pick up the last group of students after we had already done two drop-offs. So it would just enable us to be able to have one more vehicle back on a route to pick up more, either more students or to not have to do a drop-off of the, those students that we have already in the van or on the bus, and then go back and get more students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Um, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how the center served Urbana students during the heart of the, the COVID situation when we were doing Zoom school?
Absolutely, so, um, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, uh, we stayed open, uh, all throughout the day. So our students were attending school virtually from the center with supervised staff supervision, um, throughout the day. Um, so we did provide, uh, Chromebooks and laptops to students who did not have them. And of course, we know that a lot of our students don't have access to internet at home either, so they used our UNCC Wi-Fi, and some of the older kids utilized the UNCC Garage Wi-Fi. You're welcome.
Um, my questions were asked, so go ahead, Charisse.
Um, um, my question, do you have any idea how much the maintenance on your vehicles will be or in, and/or, uh, to replace the one, how much that might run?
Sure, um, yes, ma'am. So that, the vehicle that's inoperable, um, we've been looking on the site where the original, uh, vehicle was purchased. So at the time of that purchase, it was around five thousand three hundred dollars for that bus, and it was used. Um, but now, that's gone up, so the average right now is between thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars for, and, and that's for a used one. Um, now, if we're looking at new, then it'd be closer to thirty-five thousand.
Okay, and the maintenance?
Oh, sorry, and then, um, and so the maintenance on the other vehicle, so if we're talking about like the wheel alignment, is somewhere around two hundred dollars for the minibus.
Okay, and that, and, and basic other maintenance that, that needs to be done?
Routine maintenance.
Oil changes and all that kind of stuff? Okay, um, okay.
Is around, and, and that's a good question. So the routine maintenance is around that amount as well. So an oil change for the minibus is around two hundred dollars as well.
Okay, okay, I can't ask anymore.
Am I saw in your application as well, if you, you weren't able to procure this one hundred thousand dollars? There was a Illinois Human Services Capital Grant? Is that, um, would that grant be the same amount or more or less, or?
So the Illinois Human Services Capital Grant, there's one that is for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then the rest of them, so there's several others that they're offering at, uh, fifty thousand dollars. So I mean, of course, I'm gonna shoot for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, if I can. Um, but if we don't get it, then I still would go for the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a partnership or interactive relationships with other local organizations?
Um, yes, so right now, so actually, um, some of the organizations that presented earlier tonight, like for example, Freedom Schools, um, recently, some of the pictures you saw in the presentation, those were Freedom School students, um, through that Alternative Education Program in Urbana that come through. Um, they read to our kids, they volunteer in Mrs. Mitchell's closet to hang and, um, fold clothes and do things like that. Um, other major organizations, so like we do have other, um, granters in the area. We have partnerships with Champaign County Mental Health Board, um, City of Urbana. Um, we've had relationships built with, uh, the school district, um, numerous organizations, uh, that we either work with or that come in to volunteer with us or that we send our students out to volunteer, um, in those spaces.
Do you have a, an estimate for the sprinkler system at this point?
Yes, um, actually, and I apologize, I don't have a good memory, so I printed the email from Illini Fire Services, um, would be upwards of forty-five thousand dollars. You're welcome.
I'll pass.
So, um, my next question was, uh, basically, um, um, it, it regarding, uh, um, the, 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 uh, use of the funds, I guess what I wanted to know is, is, um, are you, are, are you looking to, this to be a one-year thing? Or is this something that you expect to last you, for a couple of years, at least while you get the, the maintenance to the cars and the sprinklers and all that done, or what?
Um, and I'm sorry, just for clarification, the use of the funds to be spread out, is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so yeah, so, um, from my understanding, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but the allocations would be at like twenty thousand dollars per, or however, like that's just an example, but however much of the money would be given out?
Mm-hmm.
Little by little each year, correct?
Um, I, I don't know.
So we would, well, if that is the case, um, then we would utilize the funds to start with, um, the biggest project, which would be the vehicles. Um, so we would start with that first, and then, you know, if another sum of funds comes in, then we start working on the fire sprinkler system. And like I said, the very, very last of it would just be if there's any leftover funds to go toward Mrs. Mitchell's closet.
Okay.
Pass. And I think-
Is there a sprinkler system in there now?
Yes, there is.
It's just old and you need to upgrade?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the Urbana Park District Health and Wellness Center. Next up is the Urbana Park District Health and Wellness Center. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Tim Bartlett. I'm the Executive Director at the Urbana Park District. I'm here with staff.
And I am Corky Emerson. I'm the Superintendent of Recreation for the Urbana Park District.
We have some prepared statements that relate to the questions, so we'll jump right in. We appreciate the care and dedication that City Council, Mayor, and staff have put into considering the best use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we're grateful for the opportunity to address you today about the Urbana Park District's Health and Wellness Center and why it is a quality candidate for funding. The Health and Wellness Center will have a deep and lasting impact on Urbana well beyond the exhaustion of the ARPA funds. The building itself will be a tangible community asset for decades to come, and the district is well-equipped to sustainably manage the Health and Wellness Center. It will be incorporated into our existing portfolio of UPD Parks and facilities. The Health and Wellness Center significantly expands our ability to offer services to Urbana over our current home at the Brookins Gymnasium, and will give us room to grow for the future. This facility is meant to serve Urbana's needs now and decades from now. Further, the Health and Wellness Center offers a transformational space for Urbana. It will be a safe space, offering recreation wellness options for everyone in our community. Providing positive options for the youth and teens in our community will be a priority as well. Constructive outlets for our youth can help reduce community violence and create a positive pathway for current and future health and wellness.
This project would be the best use of city ARPA funds because it amplifies their impact. First, the Health and Wellness Center leverages ARPA funds with other funding sources, including Urbana Park District funds, state grants, and significant donor support. So far, one point eight million has been raised for this facility, primarily from Urbana residents. Further, while the Health and Wellness Center will help the district to achieve our own goals for serving Urbana, it also allows us the ability to significantly increase our support for our community partners. None of us alone have the ability to successfully confront the issues facing our community, and we are committed to helping to facilitate our community partner goals as well. Whether it's our local government partners such as the Urbana School District, or Public Health District, or our nonprofit partners like CU Trauma and Resiliency Initiative, and the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. We want to be able to use this facility to help support their goals in a positive way. Finally, the Health and Wellness Center is an excellent use of ARPA funds because it specifically addresses four of the stated City Council goals for ARPA. Improving accessibility of public recreation space and youth programming, increasing support for community violence interventions, increasing job training and placement opportunities, and lastly, investing in infrastructure to increase community health, safety, and future resilience. The Health and Wellness Project also meets a larger City Council, Mayor strategic goal of promoting community health and wellbeing through funding and supporting community partners that promote health and wellness. Funding this project helps to meet stated community goals for many community agencies.
We are confident that the Urbana Park District has the resources and ability to ensure that these funds are used in accordance with federal guidelines and will achieve demonstrable results within the required timeline. First, the Urbana Park District has spent a long time planning and preparing for this new facility and anticipate beginning construction of the Health and Wellness Center in spring twenty twenty-three, and all funds will be expended well before twenty twenty-six. The district also has a long history of successful grants and project management as it relates to significant capital projects such as this, two most recent being the Crystal Lake Family Aquatic Center and the Planning and Operations Facility. Given the award of two state grants for this project, we have, have robust tracking processes in place to be sure that any funds received toward the Health and Wellness Center are used for their specified purpose. As a local government agency, our financials are also audited annually by an independent auditor, offering another layer of review. Service expansion is also a goal of construction of this facility, and the Health and Wellness Center offers a number of hard metrics we'll be able to look at to assess our success, including number of visits, number of memberships, number of programs offered, and overall program participation. For example, the Brookins Gym currently sees sixty thousand visits a year, but with the Health and Wellness Center, we'll be able to double that number to a hundred and twenty thousand. To increase access, the district also plans to dedicate thirty thousand dollars toward our youth scholarship program with the intention of some awards being for facility memberships and accepting programs like Silver Sneakers, which will help facilitate active, access for active adults in Urbana. The Health and Wellness Center is truly a transformational project for Urbana that will strengthen our community for decades to come and will be accessible, affordable, and serve all of Urbana. Thanks for this opportunity to present to you all this evening, and we'd love to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. We'll begin with Jay.
Thank you for this presentation. You mentioned the youth scholarships. What period of time is that amount for?
It's annually. I'll jump in. We'll both share our question time. We typically budget about thirty thousand dollars. We also work with the Urbana Parks Foundation in raising additional scholarships and work with any local businesses or initiatives that might add more to that.
I see that you wrote estimated a hundred and ten dollars per year for affordable memberships. Is, is that like the discounted rate, or is that the full rate?
Hundred and ten a year.
Is the, the full?
For a year.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna ask the same question I asked the library, which is, what were the support funds or ARPA-like funds that the Park District received over the pandemic? What kind of support did you get?
Park Districts, Forest Preserve Districts, Special Rec. Districts, and Conservation Districts in Illinois received no funding. We did get some of the PPE funds for wiping up, sanitizing, but that's all.
No PPP loans or?
No, no loans or no other, basically reimbursables for any cleaning supplies or services that we needed to clean facilities or that kind of fall in that, what I call sanitation mode, or you know, basic services to try to keep your facilities, you know, healthy and safe.
But never, no separate allocations like the cities receive?
As we understand Illinois, with our special districts, it was overlooked in that, and we, we were told to go to our cities and counties.
Thank you.
Earlier this year, the mayor talked about setting aside two point five million for this project. You came to a town hall and asked for two point five. Tonight, we're looking at three point three, so you know the obvious question, what happened?
Well, since April, we've seen a significant increase in construction. And so when we came at that time, we're hopeful we would get support. Obviously, we're here now, and during that time, costs have gone up. So we were basically recommending to fill that gap and that difference for, for the construction.
So we had a, a cost estimate done after we had presented, and it went up to eight hundred thousand dollars.
So my question behind, piggybacking what Chris asked, would you, if, if awarded, would you settle for less?
Well, the, really, the only other request we have is working with Champaign County. We did have an initial meeting with them. Obviously, they're waiting to see what Urbana Council would ultimately do, and we'll see, you know, if there's anything they can do. We understand that most of their funding, at least in the violence protection, sorry, violence reduction area, has mostly been granted. Again, we've been waiting, and now we're hoping to get another shot in twenty twenty-three. But we have to go to construction, so our choices would likely be postpone the project, reduce the scope, or hope for some other miracle.
Okay, so the gap at this point is three point three, and that would get construction started in the spring?
Correct. Yes, correct.
So you mentioned that this is a, a project that's been in the works for quite some time. What was the plan prior to the availability of ARPA funding?
Well, we've been at the Brookins Facility for about twenty-five years. During that time, you know, we've always had a goal, since really we built the Phillips Rec. Center and realized we didn't have enough space due to the floodway to build any sort of gym or, you know, secondary space. Obviously, with the county's announcement, they're leaving Brookins and moving out, really, you know, put us kind of on notice. We, we have to get a plan for Urbana.
So what are your different funding sources are, fundraising, et cetera, et cetera? And I, I understand that there were, is there no funding coming from corporate sponsors here in, in the community?
That's correct. Unfortunately, we have not been successful in receiving what we would call business or corporate support, even though we've asked a number of businesses. Compared to the Martin Center that's in the Champaign Park District, you know, they were successful in attracting funds from, you know, BUCY, Carl, OSF, other, other groups like that.
That's unfortunate.
It, it is. I guess they like their kids more than, than ours.
Is there any possibility of repurposing the Brookins Center itself?
No, really, the facility is something that we wouldn't recommend reinvesting. You know, there's a lot of deferred maintenance throughout that building. We have done some cooperative work with the county adding an HVAC system a number of years ago, but the basic infrastructure is not suitable really for that kind of expanded use. We did, as you know, some of you may know, we did look at other locations, other partners, nothing has panned out. We're now realizing we have to come up with a plan for Urbana on our own.
Sorry, sorry if this goes down a rabbit hole a little bit, but is there any bonding in this project? And do you have the capability to do bonding for a project like this?
If you're, I'm assuming, you know, some sort of increased, you know, debt service, we could consider that. Obviously, we don't wanna add any additional debt to Urbana residents if we could find another way.
We do have three point six million that we've already have from bonds that are going into this project.
Right, and some reserve funds, fund balance, things like that.
I've got some very complicated questions. I'm gonna send them to you in writing, give you a chance. This pop quiz format is not appropriate.
Um, I'll, I'll pass.
What was compelling about the Lear, the Washington Street site? Why that?
Well-
Done, okay.
That was a good question. We wish, we had time to answer. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll send it.
Send, send that one in, Diane. Send that one in to Will.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, last presenter tonight, Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center for Access IMC.
Good evening, Mayor Marlin and council members. My name is Miriam Larson. I'm the Executive Director at the Independent Media Center, and I really appreciate your long-lasting attention. You are almost done. And to all my fellow applicants, if you're still listening, thanks so much for your sharing. It's been inspiring to hear all of these different projects, and I hope, regardless of funding, that we get to work together. We are a member-led media and arts center that fosters the creation and distribution of media and art that emphasizes underrepresented voices. We're located, and we own the building that's the former post office building. The post office still operates out of it in downtown Urbana. And I wanna give a shout-out to members and community members of IMC who are listening tonight. So Access IMC was created to meet the ARPA goal for more accessible and youth-friendly spaces. We have heard from our members some things about our building that have really inspired this project. We only have one bathroom on the main floor, and we've heard that this isn't enough, and many projects go elsewhere. We have door openers for folks that need them, for our accessible door, but they're inconsistent in their functionality. We don't have an enclosed meeting space right now that we can rent out, so the lack of sound barrier for meetings, particularly for folks who have hearing, hearing impairments, is a challenge. So we proposed to create an enclosed community meeting space on the main level of the IMC that would have food preparation area, technology for hybrid meetings, and we would furnish it as well. We also wanna make some key accessibility improvements, add a second accessible bathroom on the main floor, widen the egress, and fix the door openers for our south entry, which is the accessible entrance on Cherry Alley between IMC and Lincoln Square. And then also some key safety improvements, including covering the asbestos flooring in the, in the lower level of our center. We really believe our community can create the healing that we need through arts, through organizing, and so our business model will allow us to offer this space free or at a low cost. And we know that this will benefit some of our current hosts, so to give you some examples of, and we've really seen an increase in events happening at the IMC in the past three months. We have a dance team that sometimes, that happens in the evenings and might need to meet at the same time as another dance rehearsal or a meeting. And right now, we don't have the, a way to close out those different spaces. We have a Brazilian martial arts meeting right now. We have a Queer Tango project that started up, and we're excited to help support more, more growth as people come out of their, their homes. We love our neighbors, and we feel like local options don't fully meet the need for meeting space. So Lincoln Square is great for big events, but doesn't have small spaces. Urbana Free Library, I talked with their staff, has awesome study rooms and conference meetings, but there's a high demand, and their meeting policies don't allow for food. That you can't sell things at events, and events have to be open to all, which can invite disruption. Phillips Recreation Center, really enjoyed the Park District presentation. Great for recreation and events with food. They have a kitchen, but they do require a hundred to two hundred dollar deposit. So we can fill a need for a really affordable space for things like birthday parties, memorial events, community meetings, and hybrid meetings, which, you know, may impact, be needed continually for, for folks with compromised immune systems. We have recent experience managing ARPA funds. Right now, we have seven hundred thousand dollar grant for the UC IMC incubator program that supports emerging minority-led nonprofit organizations, and we report on that monthly to DCEO, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And then we have three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to replace our cooling system and build a ramp to our lower levels. We've just kicked off HVAC renovations, which we're really excited about. And then you can see a picture here of the ramp going to the lower level that we anticipate building next year. And so this is really part of accessibility improvements we wanna make across the board for our building. The impact of this project, including after ARPA funds run out, is really invested, investing in community-created solutions. Just like our community requested in the Public Realm Study, which I took a look at before coming here this evening, there's a lot of feedback about how important art, music, and public space is to our community here in Urbana. This includes green space ideas around the IMC, including Cherry Alley, which I think makes it really important for our south entry entrances, our, our entrances on Cherry Alley to be accessible. Those are also where the post office access doors are. So we're really excited to be part of downtown Urbana's resurgence alongside many other organizations, and I'm happy to take some questions. Questions?
Could you tell us a little more about the fifty-some thousand for outreach to launch this program?
Sure. So we had the privilege of hiring a venue coordinator this past year at the IMC, and I've just really seen that staff position make people feel welcome in a way that as a, in the past, we've been entirely member-led, that creates challenges, particularly around outreach. So this would be a, a position that would really launch, it's a part-time position for two years, the last two years of the, the granting program, that would help us create multilingual materials, do that initial outreach, so people know who we are and what space and opportunities we offer.
I'm gonna follow up on that a little bit, and thank you for your presentation. Because in the, in the application, it talks about sixty thousand dollars in personnel. I would assume that part of that outreach number there is part of that personnel, but is there some extra in?
Yeah, for, for grants administration and, and management of the projects. We have a staff of, a permanent staff of one full-time and two part-time positions. So we've found that managing these projects, these big construction projects, really benefits from some project management help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you talk a bit about what you would do if you received some, but not all of the funding you're requesting?
Sure. So, you know, I think there are some ways we'd really look at how we can reduce costs for doing some of these things, whether it's dividers in our space, that also might help reduce air circulation, given the way we've seen and learned about how diseases travel. And then also, we would go back to our community and really ask, you know, what are the priorities? Again, looking at that Public Realm Study, I was really taken by how much that corridor between Lincoln Square and our building might become a corridor for green space, and so I actually, I need to reach out to those folks and talk more about sort of what other changes that might set us up to do, but I think that that has risen to priority, just making that accessible entrance really welcoming.
You have here about the asbestos flooring in the basement, is it, can you explain that, it's just on the floor?
Yeah, so as I understand it, asbestos isn't dangerous as long as it's not broken. So what we would do is cover the flooring, it's the hallway flooring in the lower level, which is getting old and sort of on the brink of being potentially hazardous.
Okay, thank you.
Could you share this, if there are some measurable impacts, and a lot of this isn't as measurable, but if you have some ways to measure success of these things?
Sure. Well, so one of the things I did in researching this program was to look at the library's data that they have about public meeting spaces, and that's really amazing, public data on the use of community spaces. I think in terms of, you know, how many jobs are created or whatever, it's a little harder to represent that, but in 2022, we engaged with 23,000 people, which is probably an underestimate, and in the past, it's been as many as 100,000. We do keep data on the number of participants in workshops, and we are funded in part by the Illinois Arts Council, which asks us to document different kinds of programming that we have, whether it's classes or newspapers that we put out through the public eye or performance events, so we will continue to track that.
So through that information that you've been collecting, do you have a rough idea of how many of your programs serve youth, or what percentage?
So I can tell you that in the last couple of years, the number of youth we've served has been pretty low. It really varies based on, and I joined the IMC in 2020, right before the pandemic, and during the pandemic, we had an abrupt drop in youth engagement and venue usage in general. So this year, though, we've seen an increase, we have a hair braiding class that happens once a week, we have the Brazilian drumming group that's really interested in doing more youth engagement events, and, you know, I've been making notes about youth engagement groups, but we don't want to be the ones that create the youth programming necessarily, we really want to be a site where people can come and use the space, whether that's doing art workshops, recording podcasts, what have you, that we've found that that's really, helps us be a resource to the community instead of sort of creating the programming like some nonprofits. Our model is a little bit different in that way.
Chris, did you pass?
Okay. He's been passed. So, so my question is, what basically IMC is wanting to be is the event, the space of Urbana, like-
An event space, yeah.
Yeah, an event space.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and for that to kind of happen, you need, you need these amenities to afford?
Yeah, we really, we see a gap in funding, I mean, like I said, we have some amazing neighbors in downtown Urbana that are doing this, not to mention sort of the music scene at the Rose Bowl or other kinds of things, but, but like I said, sort of small meeting space is limited, and we'd really like to see that be an option that we can offer so that we can do things like conferences with a breakout room or events where childcare can be happening at the same time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Wait, I just have one announcement. Just a reminder- Just a reminder that, now I forgot, oh, just a reminder that no allocations or decisions will be made before the first of the year. There will be a discussion item on Monday night's agenda for the 19th, the City Council meeting. It'll be a discussion only for us to start to address what the next steps in the process will be, but again, no votes, no decisions before the first of the year, so we can all enjoy the holiday.
Yes, please.
And thank you again so much to everyone who has presented, it's just overwhelming to hear the resources and care that's coming out of our community, so thank you for helping us, and now the hard part begins.
And now you can recognize my motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
You may make a motion. Second made by James, seconded by-
Second.
Chandra, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, this meeting is adjourned.